I have that.
What is that?
After we talk, the limit of change it to...
Oh, you made notes. Cool.
I did, yeah.
Nice.
Listen, I came prepared.
That's good.
Oh, we're recording. We're recording, by the way.
All right, we'll just wait for Diane and Nancy to get situated.
Hi. How are ya?
Hi.
Hello. All right, we're good to go here, I think, right? So, we're going to call the public portion of the meeting back to order. It looks like 6:31 PM. And as I always like to stand and salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think somebody was gonna make a motion to seal the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? I think it was Edvin that made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to scheduled business. So, we just had the election last week, so the people have spoken. So, we would like to thank Selectman Lisa Gonya for years of service to the town. And we'd like to welcome Edvin Cronolik to the Board of Selectmen. And with that, we should discuss some reorganization we need to do. So, I will... I would suggest if we want to start with a Chair and then a Vice Chair, and then that way we can move to everything else once those positions are in place. So, if anybody has any motions...
How many motions do we make, Larry, for the Chair?
I'll second.
Seconded by Edvin. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that was all five. So, if I had a gavel, I'd give it to Larry. But I don't have a gavel, so Larry, the show is yours.
So, thank you. Thank you for your...
No problem.
So, I need a motion for Vice Chair.
I move to nominate Charlie Melvin as Vice Chair.
So, the only discussion is, I would... You know, Charlie would make a fine Vice Chair, but Kate Michaels, it's her last... Technically, well, the last year of her term. So, I just wanted to see if Kate, if it's something that you'd want to be nominated for.
I would ordinarily say yes, but in the hybrids, because of my immune cover of my ex-mother and the hybrid thing, I think it's in the best interest of the town to have someone be Vice Chair who is physically present in the Town Hall.
All right, thank you. Aye?
So, we'll move on to the liaisons.
I might suggest... Well, I might suggest ex officios, as those are easier.
Oh, so what?
I think you two are muted still. At the top, on the top, there's only...
How's that? No, it's mute off, right? That's what mine says.
You should be able... Just test it.
Test... Test it?
If I can hear you. No, you're pressing the wrong buttons. Close that up. There's your mute button, right there. Nope, do it that way, unmute. Now, let me check it.
Hello, hello, hello?
Okay, move your lapel mic up a little higher. Right in your tie would be good. Okay.
I think that's how the TV news guys do it, right on the tie.
Okay, quick. Think we're good.
All right, so ex officios, so...
I think there are three.
Those aren't nominations, are they?
Well, we'd vote on it, but yeah.
So, I would stay with the Planning Board unless someone else wants it?
So, I would move to... And obviously speak up, as Larry just asked if somebody else wants it. But I would move to nominate Larry Foote to the Planning Board as our ex officio.
I'll second.
Did Kate second it?
I seconded too. I don't know who heard him.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll recommend Matt for the ex officio... Is it an ex officio to the Rec? To the Rec Department?
I'll second.
If anybody else wants it, speak up.
I'd be happy to take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did somebody second that?
I did.
You're gonna have to speak up.
Speak up a lot, all right. And what was the other one?
Conservation.
And I recommend Kate Michaels for Conservation Committee.
I'll second that.
Anyone have a discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
And I think that's right, right? We only have the three ex officios.
Oh, yeah?
Unless we had a Heritage Commission, which we don't.
Yeah, I don't think we have a Heritage Commission.
I know, so...
Okay, so now we're gonna be moving on to the liaisons. I'll open up discussion for the definition of liaison to the Board.
Yeah, I just...
Anyone has any concerns, questions before we appoint or whatever?
Yeah, I just think we need to agree on a definition, just so there's no confusion later on.
I just feel that the liaison should be able to talk to the Department Head along with the Department Employees. We're not talking like an everyday conversation or even once-a-week conversation, maybe twice a month, just to get the feel of what's going on. And I think in the past, just talking to the Department Head, there's been some flaws. So, I think the liaison should start hitting the employees and talking to them and then reporting back to the Board. Edvin, being new, you know, so the liaison cannot make a decision for the full Board. You're just an in-between, between the Department and the Select Board, and you bring it back to us. Relaying information. Just relaying information.
That's all, relaying information. Does anybody else have any other...
My only concern would be graying the lines between, you know, the chain of command. And while I think communication is good, I wouldn't want to be in a position where the Department Heads think we're going to kind of overstep their authority on... You know, on a semi-regular basis, whatever, once a year, if we wanted to take the pulse of the organization or if there's a...
Well, where the Department Head here, could you have an opinion if your liaison talked to your employees?
Microphones, you're gonna talk?
The Chief, Fire Chief.
Not to put you on the spot.
Not to put you on the spot, but...
Matt, thank you for being chairman. You've been great to the Fire Department. Personally, I think that could be dangerous, having the liaison talk to individual employees. I think if the liaison did talk to the individual employees, depending on that employee, you have some Departments that might not like their Department Head. I'm fortunate, and I'm very thankful on that half. But that's a board decision. I know for the past year, the Fire Department, since I've been Chief, my liaison was Selectman Doggett. And then we adopted Selectman Melvin last year. We've worked good together for the past year. We've... A lot of stuff that has come up. We informed my liaison on, including purchases. We've explained the difference of what the purchases mean. I could see it being kind of a gray area if a select Board Member is going off to the side and talking to employees. I personally don't care. I have nothing to hide. But if you're gonna do that, if you're gonna do that, I cannot speak for every other Department Head. I can speak for the Fire Department. I don't have a problem with my liaison. He does it now. My liaison talks to my members now.
The Board should be able to talk to any employee of this town.
They all work for you. I don't have a problem with that.
Absolutely.
But that's up to you. That's not my decision.
And I think we have to make it clear...
But that's not what we're talking about.
Correct. I was asked a question.
Right.
And I'm not gonna... I cannot speak for all Department Heads. I can speak for the Fire Department. I do not have a problem with any Selectmen, nor have I ever had a problem with any Selectmen walking into the fire station and asking any question. I encourage every member of the Board of Selectmen to walk into that fire station and ask questions, to look around. That's how things get done.
Okay, thank you.
I think we just have to make it clear it's more of a communication aspect.
Yeah.
I like the idea of it being, like we said, it's the point person. As I mentioned before, other towns have on their website, they actually include on the page the liaisons to the different Departments, so someone knows who to reach out to, so that any member of the Fire Department or Police Department can communicate with us. But the idea that... I think we have to be very careful, because if it goes the other way around, where we seek out every individual, we just have to know it's like doors open. Contact us if you need us. But to seek things out, I think, could be seen micromanaging. Doesn't mean you can't, but I think that we have to be very careful with that, 'cause the Chief's the Chief.
Yeah, and that's my concern. If you don't mind, can I read something? This is my proposal for a definition. And Diane, I can email this to you if I...
That would be nice.
"The Selectmen's liaison role is being created to improve efficiency and communication between the Board and Department Heads and avoid micromanagement situations. This is not intended to create a new reporting structure or an additional Department Head. Communication should continue between all other Board Members and the Department as necessary. Approval of prudential affairs remain per published Board policy and the voting rights of the Board in a quorum." So, that's my proposal.
I like it, but you need to add that the liaison can also talk to the employee. You just have Department Head in there.
Well, no, I said Department.
Huh?
I said...
Department and Department Head?
"Communication should continue between all other Board Members and the Department as necessary."
Okay. Good with that? That's fine. I like that.
I like it. It's good to have a lawyer on the Board of Selectmen.
I'll send you a bill. So, I'll make a motion to adopt this as the definition.
No, I'll second it.
I'll serve.
Seconded, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass. Okay, so the recommendations for the liaisons for the Department would be Selectman Melvin for the Fire Department and the Transfer Station. Selectman Kate Michaels would be for Conservation Committee.
We don't have a liaison.
Selectman Arau will be Highway and Rec.
You said Kate was on the Conservation?
Yes.
So, that's not a liaison, that's an ex officio.
Oh, yeah, you already did that.
Oh.
We don't liaison Conservation.
Okay.
We already voted on that, right?
Yeah, that's why I'm just making sure you ended...
That one's good.
Kate, do you want the Building Department?
Oh, I thought you're...
No pressure, I can do it if you don't want to.
You want...
I just didn't want to leave you out.
Shanti, you are the Building Department, right? Or am I missing? Yes.
Yeah, I am the Building Department, correct.
Oh.
I just didn't want to leave you out.
I was actually going to suggest we had talked about doing a liaison with the school.
Oh, I like that.
With the what?
Because not huge, but just to have...
The School Board?
Yeah, when they want to do art contests or to increase engagement with very benign town government contest, like the essay writing and art contest.
Did they have one for the school?
Anything of that nature.
This is a hot-button issue for me. So, the only... My only concern would be, we just came out of campaign season, and I brought up, as I do every campaign season, that I want us to have regular meetings with the School Board.
Yeah, we talked about that.
This year, this year, I actually got a couple of them to tell me they think it's a good idea. So, I wouldn't want to interfere with that. So, if we have a liaison, we kind of have to discuss it with them, but it's probably a good idea, as long as we can have full meetings.
Yeah, 'cause I've reached out to several people there over the years and think if we have an actual liaison, we might have better communication.
Okay, I like that. You could be the liaison for the School Board.
It's not the School Board so much as the school, right? School Board's school, yeah.
We'll see. The door might be locked when you get there, so we need to make sure.
That may happen. I just think it would be so great that we could open that.
We can write a letter to propose it, basically.
Yeah, it's just to possibly open the door to increase engagement with the kids and get them involved.
I think he'd welcome us.
Yeah, I'd love to.
Eddie did you, right?
Yep.
I've made some attempts to...
So, Matt's gonna be the Highway. Edvin, you're gonna be the Police Department, and I'm gonna be the Building Department.
Okay, so you're going a little fast here. So, all I've got so far is Kate, his liaison to the school.
The potential school.
The what?
Potential.
The potential.
So, let's put that one on hold until we find out.
Okay.
Okay? So, Katie's on hold for the school until we find out what the procedure will be. And then I'm gonna be the liaison for the Building Department, and Edvin will be the liaison for the Police Department.
Edvin is the Police?
What?
You don't want me for Police? I was interested.
We never had a dual role. We only had one.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, potentially, it's a thought.
I like the idea of two, Kate and Edvin, for the Police Department. But that's just me.
I will go... Edvin, what do you feel?
I'm a therapist. I can be very helpful.
Let me know when you guys figure it out.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
What are your thoughts?
I mean, like I said, I mean, I have the...
Ain't gonna hurt.
Experience with the Kalia.
It's not gonna hurt. So, Katie, I will make the dual role with Edvin and yourself for the Police Department.
Thank you. I'll second that. You know, you have to vote on it, right?
Yeah.
No, I don't think we voted on him.
Well, yeah, we... Essentially, what you just said, I think of as the motion, and then we...
Okay.
Have a second. You got all that, Diane?
I seconded that motion.
Second.
But now we'll just see if someone will...
So, let me... We should go back and go down the list, so she can type it.
Charlie is Fire Department.
The question with the dual role, who calls who? That's... So, since we're dual liaisons, does the Chief call Kate first? And it's just confusing. It seems confusing. So, if you want to just give Kate Police, then I'll do Building.
I think the dual is good, because we each have a different vibe.
All right.
Charlie is...
I would trust you guys could figure it out.
Okay, I've got that part.
Myself is Building Department.
Okay.
Matt is Highway.
Oh, Matt is Highway, okay.
And Rec. And Rec.
Hold on, I got it on silence.
Yeah, I already got that.
Edvin is the PD with the support of Kate.
Okay.
And I'm on the Transfer Station. We're just gonna try that out. And if it's too much conflict, then we'll have to revisit that one. Cut it down to one.
Transfer Station?
Yeah. You put me in at the Transfer. Edvin would be the main liaison, and Kate is support. Okay, I'm the Transfer Station. And Charlie's Transfer Station also, with the Fire.
I have another suggestion when you're done. I'd like to put forth two...
Well, that's his motion, right?
Go ahead.
Oh, wait. Oh, yeah, we didn't vote, sorry.
I think Kate just seconded for discussion, I think is what she did.
No, I'm in favor of... I'm fine with this. I still would rather do with the Police. It's kind of, you could just put us both on.
All right, so she seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
And I just have a suggestion to put forth about the... I know Mike Povero had said we needed a liaison or just a communicator with the completion of the fire station. I really think that's a good idea with things going on, and I think Edvin would be great for that.
That's too much of a conflict of interest.
'Cause I looked that up, just like you speak the language.
Yeah, I'm worried that's too much of a conflict.
Okay.
I think Mike's good at what he does, and I think, unless Mike wants otherwise.
Yeah, I think historically, we had one. And then we decided maybe the best thing to do is for him just to come directly to the Board.
Oh, yeah, I know. I remember a while ago, we had a meeting where he said, "I want a liaison," and it was shot down. So, that's why I brought it up again. So, Mike, if you're fine...
I never said that.
Okay.
I have it in the minute, but okay.
Shanti has his hand up?
Uh-oh.
I think.
Yep.
Yeah. So, I would just add that the completion of the fire station falls under the Building Department and the Fire Department. And therefore, the liaison for the Building Department and the liaison for the Fire Department would be able to inform the Board as to the progress or the progression of the completion of the fire station. So, to introduce a third party just seems a little bit much. I was only kind of brought into this fire station situation within the last year or so, or actually, to be specific, within the last month. And we can talk about it later on during this meeting. I think that's why I'm here. But I think that the liaisons assigned to the two Departments that are tasked with completing the station would be the ones that would report to the Board. That's my experience.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. You're right.
Sounds good to me.
So, I think we've got to make sure our Building and Fire report back to the Board, so we're all informed.
Basically, we already have liaisons to Building and Fire, which have the responsibility anyway. So, they could, when it comes to the project of completing the fire station, they could act as...
Correct.
Kind of.
Yeah. Definitely bring us back information, so we all know about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would be great.
All right, moving on to commercial trash hauling.
Wait, did we... Yeah, we voted.
We voted. So, apparently Steve wants to hire another guy, correct? From what I'm hearing. That's what he told me at the Transfer Station. But his license is only for one class, one... Limit one class?
Yeah, limit of one class, three pickup truck.
So, he can have three pickup trucks?
No.
No. It says one to three.
So, it's a permit, and the permit is based on the policy and the policy... 'Cause it's not him, right? It's the policy as a whole. And I think the policy is limited to one vehicle.
One vehicle. So, I told him at the Transfer Station that he couldn't... He could hire an additional person, but he would have to use his truck. He can't bring in another truck, 'cause the permit is only for one truck per license. Am I correct on that, and the rest of the Board Members that have been here? Yep. Okay.
And so, if we did anything, we'd be changing policy.
Either that or have the other guy do his own permit.
So, the question is, the other guy... Oh, sorry.
Is that only open once a year?
Yeah, in December.
Or does anybody come in throughout the year?
Yeah, and anybody can... We've never had anybody come off cycle, but it's once a year. Diane puts out the request for, you know, applications.
Is the second guy gonna be driving just on Tuesdays? 'Cause I think he said that in that email, I think he said he's just busy, that he needs to hire a second guy.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Steve St. Seer, owner of Newton Waste Company. I am...
Are you in park?
I am in park.
Okay, good.
Is that the Transfer Station?
No, I finished my runs for today, and then I had to go pick up my daughter at soccer. So, here I am. I'm parked in the parking lot of the soccer facility, so... Just want to clarify the topic that just came up. I just... I'm just, quite honestly, too busy. I just need a little help. And the person who I am working with now, he is only gonna be delivering trash on Tuesdays with me.
How many... Out of curiosity, I know we have this filed. How many customers do you have currently?
I'm up to about eighty... Eighty-five.
So, that's eighty-five taxpaying residents. Let's not lose sight of that.
That's correct.
And how many trips are you making now a week?
It's usually about six. And those trips include trash and recycling. So, you know, I don't know what it would be without the recycling, but I'm well beneath the ten-load limit.
So, Steve, with this second gentleman, would he be just doing recycling?
You know, I'm sort of charting new territory here, but for the moment, yes. You know, I had him start on recycling and, you know, depending on how it goes, I may ask him to do more.
You know, when we started this thing, it shouldn't be lost. When we started it, we kind of did a trial period. And I don't think we should be afraid of doing a trial period again if we want to change something. My thing is, and I think everybody on the Board agrees, we don't want to fleet, right? No offense, Steve, but we don't want you to add on 12 vehicles. But we could put a cap... We could put a cap on it, meaning we could allow him to service... And again, it's eighty-five taxpayers. We could allow him to be in a better position to service those residents without creating this huge change to the policy.
I mean, what would you guys think about amending it to adding one truck for refuse and one truck for recycling? Would that be something that...
Might be a start.
So, then they'll be coming in 12 times a week?
They'd be still coming in the same amount of times, just one guy's recycling, one guy is trash.
The volume...
Twelve times.
The volume does not change, remember that. It's still the... It's still a volume reflective of eighty-five residents.
I wanted to go along with a, whether a three-month or six-month...
Trial period?
This is Pete here, Transfer Station Manager. Can I say something?
Go ahead, Pete. Who's that?
So, with the recycling, if I remember correctly, recycling is unlimited loads per week. It's the trash that is limited to ten loads per week.
Yeah, he's correct.
And I ask all my people to recycle. It's a requirement of being one of my customers, which is also, I think, in the policy.
Pete, other than that, Pete, pointing that out, that's important to note. But Pete, otherwise, how would you administratively, would this change anything you do?
Not very much, if anything. You know, I just, we're keeping track of how many times he comes in, what is trash, what is recycling. He's not abusing it at all, you know? He's been really nice about it.
So, and should we do a three-month trial run and have him come back in front of us?
I'll go with the three-month trial.
I'll go for a three-month trial. Question for Steve. If we did a three-month trial, what are your thoughts on that? Question for Steve, if we did a three-month trial, what, what are your thoughts on that? We haven't voted yet, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'll take whatever you can give me. I, you know, I have full-time job and three kids, so any, any amount of time saved is worth it to me.
I, I'd like to suggest we don't limit it just to recycling. I mean, wouldn't that really be the best help for you if we do a three-month trial? Or do you want him just to be doing recycling?
I mean, for me, the more flexibility, the better, but I don't want to, you know, I don't want, I don't want to overstep if, if that's a problem for anybody.
Pete, what do you think of that? Is Pete there?
Yeah, as long as he doesn't go over the 10 loads per permit, I have no problem with that. The three months would be a great trial period to see how it works out.
And I guess for any, I don't know if anyone's watching at home, but there was some talk, remember a while ago, there was a little bit, that everyone was concerned that it was getting too crowded at the transfer station, but wasn't that just because the compactor was down after all? And that was.
No, that, see, now that happens on the weekends and Steve is never there.
Yeah.
So that's.
Okay, good. It's good, so.
That was holidays was when that stuff happened.
Okay, good, because I know a lot of people thought it was because of Steve, but it is not for anyone listening, watching, okay?
All right, so Evan, can you make the motion?
Wait a minute. Wait a minute, before you do. Number six, Steve.
Yes.
It says that trash must be bagged, marked with the hauler's identification by printing on the bag or applied sticker. Are you doing that?
Yeah, I have stickers that I put on the bag.
Okay, because we're going to need to see that because of simple reason, if somebody puts a chemical in a bag that you haven't checked, it goes into the container. We're in trouble. That has to be followed.
Yeah, thankfully, that has not been a problem in the two and a half years and, you know, I, I hope it, but yes.
Well, to protect yourself, Steve, you should turn around and stop at the shack and have them look at it and make sure that everything is proper.
Sure.
All right, so Diane, I can send you this to the long, but I, I motioned to amend, to temporarily amend the commercial haulers contract that was adopted on February 19th, 2019, to read on line three, limit of two class one dash three pickup trucks with sidewalls no higher than cab of truck with appropriate commercial liability insurance for a period of 90 days or three months.
But the second one's recycled only, correct?
I thought we weren't going to go with that given, I mean.
Oh, we're not?
I, I don't, I mean, we should just give him the three-month period and see what happens.
Well, I, I will second the motion as it stands. We can see how that flies.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm good with more general.
I mean, see what happens in three months and.
Okay. I mean, no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kate was on mute.
Aye, definitely aye.
Diane, you want me to send you that or is it what I just said or are you good?
Yeah, if you have it in an email, send it to me. Sure, great, that's good. Thank you.
All right, Trish, EOC update.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Steve.
I'll make this quick. So I always, I've been drilling it down just pertaining to Newton and during the legal calls, any questions that may be of interest to us as a municipality. So I'm not doing the state numbers, you can look that yourself. Newton numbers, 295, one to four active cases. They can't narrow it down more than that because it does violate HIPAA. The school, just as my, my last report on March 2nd, we still have 11 recovered from the high school and two from the middle school recovered. No other reported cases with, within staff or the memorial. And then on our legal call, we had some issues. Obviously, this is a moving target as the vaccine is moving on. So one question was municipal employees are afraid of overstepping and registering for 2A. We have town libraries in this particular case, this person said that hold after-school reading programs and other recreation programs. Would these employees fall under this phase? And they're saying that, you know, everybody wants to be in the phase that's being done. You can get our specific answers at COVID vaccine at dos.nh.gov to be specific, but right now, if your age isn't in that category, they really don't want to hear from you yet. The other thing was in terms of anticipated employment dates for summer camps and after-school camps. Is there anything specific for verification and how do we send a list of eligible park and or recreation employees, like for instance, lifeguards, our recreation liaison may want to know, lifeguards to the state? For 16 and 17-year-olds, is there anything we need for verification? And the answer is, the employee needs a letter from the town on Town Letterhead stating the eligibility, as the state is not likely, they don't want lists, they want us to do like we've been doing. We sent first responders in, they were on, on the list. So they want a town letterhead with a list. Employees just need something to prove employment. They don't want the application. They, for minors, they said they need parental approval and they'll, the minors will be getting a Pfizer vaccine. Anyone, like as we go to lifeguards, I'm kind of directing this to you, anyone that wants this, that is going to be a lifeguard and really would like the vaccine, their name should be given to EOC and we have to process it through our channels. And then the last question was, is a small list of people in the community that cannot drive or lack easy access to rides? Any updates at home, at-home vaccinations? And they said if they've not been identified by home care associations, obviously they can call, call 211, but in our particular case, Larry is working on something. When that phase opens up, we may be able to just take care of Newton residents, but that's a little ways off. We have to wait for the age bracket to drop down a little bit. Locally, the selectman, you already know this, tomorrow, the Newton EOC is assisting the state public health and Sanborn School District to vaccinate all the teachers for Sanborn School District, includes Kingston, Fremont, and Newton. We'll be rotating those towns and the teachers throughout the day. We have 500 scheduled to receive shots tomorrow. Newton is actually supplying, supplying the support staff for the intake and we're providing the EMS. Kingston is providing an ambulance and we, setup is at eight tomorrow, vaccines nine to five, and breakdown is at six. I actually talked to the newspaper today, so they're going to be there, so that's kind of cool, get a little publicity out of it. Next Wednesday on March 23rd, Seacoast Public Health is coming to Packer Meadows along with assistance from exit EMS to vaccinate residents at that location that actually have already registered and Newton EOC will be assisting that. And as a final, it's all about the money, so let's talk about money. And I confirmed this with Kim today, our bookkeeper, we're still waiting for an outstanding, we're calling it our FEMA cycle two to come in. And part of it was the electronic, the message signed, they were coming up with, with fees and how to handle that. We still have not received that. When it comes, because the state is still talking about it, we're looking at it anywhere between $17,000 and $26,000, which is kind of cool. And then FEMA number three, Larry's reviewing it, probably starting tomorrow, it's just about done, and that's going to be another $78,107.83 coming to the town as reimbursements. And that's that.
Bravo.
Oh, and actually, our contract, so I sent you this, what I alluded to about the school district tomorrow. So back, if you listen to the minutes or if you remember the meeting on March 2nd here, we talked about that they wanted us to come up with a detailed rate so that our EMS could work and give vaccines at fixed sites for the state. So the state came up with this emergency management directive for COVID-19 vaccinations and Matt signed it and Larry, well, actually Larry signed that and Matt signed the certificate of authorization, I think it was, of authority. And then they said now, so that we can get paid and reimbursed at 100%, they needed the detail rate. So I spoke briefly with the fire chief, I spoke briefly with the police chief, we dealt with other towns, we came up, or not us, but the other towns came up with what you saw, the supplemental wage program, or I guess you could call it a suggestion contract, so that we can send this tomorrow with our people when we can get reimbursed by the school and the feds. So it's the detail rate plus the administration costs and we geared that to match the police department. And so if you guys get a chance to look at that, it would be great to get that signed.
Do you need a motion to have them sign that?
Yep, well, I can't do the motion.
No.
So I would, I would move for the chairman, right? You just need one signature?
Actually, I put.
The whole board?
All of you, I figured you'd all be here, but.
So I, I would motion for the full board to sign the detail rate.
Yep.
Is there any other description there, the, the detail rate sheet?
Well, it's, so it's $50 to the employee plus $15 administration fee for a total of 65.
Emergency Management Supplemental Wage Program.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Okay, so I'll, if you can put that in my motion.
And I'll second. Charlie did, okay. Diane, I'll give you this copy with all the signatures on it.
Say what?
I'll turn this one in with all the signatures.
And I just need a copy once you get it. Did you hear what he said?
No, I couldn't figure it out.
You'll leave that copy with all the signatures on it.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to sign this.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, and that was a, that was a one-year anniversary, I think.
Yeah, 10 years.
Whoever thought we.
Tomorrow.
Is it tomorrow?
Tomorrow, when you officially close this down.
So Dee, fire rescue station update. I know we have three members here, who wants to go first?
So I have a question.
Oh.
So we're, we're now talking about something that concerns the fire station. So we have two members of the fire station on the board. Do they want to recuse themselves?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't directly affect us if we're talking in regards to.
It's just an update, right?
Update on sprinkler system, correct?
Yeah, I don't know. It's, I don't know, it's up to you, you guys can decide.
Are we going to vote on anything?
We could be voting on something.
Well, if we vote on it, then I'll, I'll recuse myself. I haven't in the past year, but.
Okay.
And say, yeah, definitely, I've already said I'm going to recuse myself, but nothing to be voted on. All yours, chief.
Good evening. I sent the board a letter after the last public meeting we had with my recommendation. I know the building inspector, Mr. Wolf, is on Zoom. My recommendation to the board would be to follow that letter, the vote on a third-party inspector and the job of that inspector would be to review the plans on behalf of the town. The board voted years ago to send those plans to the marshal's office for review. That'd be part of that third-party person's job. That third-party would ensure that the job is being done per the plans, per code, and then once it's done, they sign the affidavits saying that it's done. There's your liaison, would be that third-party inspector.
Okay.
That's my recommendation and I sent you who I recommended.
So I think, because I, you know, I was in the meeting two weeks ago, I was trying to explain this, but I don't think it came out clearly enough. SFC Engineering was our third-party inspector. They did the initial, you know, we had the punch list of the ADA issues and the sprinkler system was on that. So then we took steps to mitigate the ADA stuff. I think those are all done. Sprinkler system obviously is still an issue. SFC Engineering at that point backed away and we went to the plumbing contractor. The reason SFC Engineering backed away at that point was so they would still not have a conflict for a final inspection down the road. I think we're down the road. So SFC Engineering, we have the, you know, the, the project manager here can tell us, but I think they're still available. We might want to stick with them. And by, and by the way, they were recommended by the fire marshal's office, so.
I'd kind of like to go with the one that the fire chief has. Recommended.
The fire protection engineer that I mentioned in my letter to the board of selectmen, that was in a phone conversation with the building inspector. Speaking for myself, I was under the assumption that SFC was totally out of the equation. They, if they've been already part of the project, that's going to be a decision for the board. I'm not sure of cost.
Well, that's.
100%. I, I don't know the cost of both of them. It, it's good to know that the board did have somebody for a period there as the third-party reviewer, which is great. You, you just need to get somebody back on board because I believe, and I don't want to speak for the project manager, but I, in looking, we're almost getting to the home stretch here. So you need that, whoever it is, involved on behalf of the town of Newton. Let's kick it into the end zone, let's go.
Thank you. Project manager have anything?
And the, the costs, we, we should know costs.
Oh, I think it's 180 versus 80. I think Shanti.
Per hour?
Yeah, is it 180 versus 80?
I have no crisis, Mr. Chairman.
I thought I saw that, but I'd have to research it.
Is Mike, oh, good. No listening.
And then we'll get to, after Mike, we'll get to Shanti.
Mike Povero, construction manager. There was a meeting back in May 31st of 2019. Matt, you were present in that meeting. And in that meeting, this was discussed specifically. And who was present in that, was, president at that meeting was Dennis, the previous building inspector before Shanti, Matt, Kelly Davis, Jeff Murphy, and myself. There's minutes to that meeting, you guys can have them if you want. We did the minutes for the construction part of it and in there, it laid out where we were and how we get to now. And in that, I think you'll see that SFC Engineering was going to do the inspection and review of the plans. I can get you those minutes, you can look at them. That's not set in stone, but that was talked about at that particular time. And that was the meeting that, and I was a little confused, I still am standing here. It was said that the plans were going to the state fire marshal's office. Where that started, who started it, I don't remember, but those plans have been sitting at the state fire marshal's office now for weeks and weeks now. Sean Toomey may do a cursory courtesy review of the plans, but he's still not going to approve them. The state fire marshal has no, I shouldn't say jurisdiction, but it is jurisdiction unless it's a state building, a school, or health facility, the state fire marshal has nothing to do with fire sprinkler reviews for buildings. And that fire station does not fall into that criteria. Shanti, do you agree with that?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. The fire marshal's office is not having the authority or jurisdiction per se. I think my understanding, based on conversations that I've had with the chief, was that earlier on, this was a bit of a politically charged project and so the, the chief decided or felt that it may be beneficial to step back so there may not be a confusion or a conflict of interest. In other words, if the chief, who would typically would review, the fire department for Newton would typically review commercial plans for fire stations, gas stations, any commercial project whatsoever, along with the building department. We would each, we would each review these. I may reach out to a third-party. The chief has a prerogative to reach out to a third-party as well. So in this situation, I believe that the chief had reached out to the fire marshal's office as that third-party. Fire Marshal Parisi at the time was on board and had agreed to, to review, is my understanding. Of course, I wasn't there, this is hearsay. And essentially, that's, so fire marshal office is there for advisory only, but it would be nice to have their unofficial stamp of approval on it moving forward. So if any residents were concerned about how this all was completed and transpired, then they could look to the fire marshal's office as some, you know, form of security in their, in their mind. But typically speaking, the local fire department and the building department is responsible for all review and inspection for any commercial building, fire department or not.
Building inspectors, correct matter of fact, last week, I showed my liaison, we have four sets of plans for four different projects going on in town that I reviewed. If the board remembers, it was already said twice, it was a resident who contacted the fire marshal's office in regards to the sprinkler system. Okay? After that meeting in December 2018, the board decided that the plans were going to go up to the marshal's office for their blessing. That's all the marshal's office is going to do. Based on that inquiry from a town resident, yes, Marshal Parisi did come down. Yes, the building has a sprinkler system in, it's not 100% compliant. He was told there was zero sprinkler system in that building. They're just an advisory board. So Mike is 100% correct, Shanti's 100% correct. I said it, since I've been here, I haven't sent no plans to the marshal's office for a review other than the middle school, which that is code. So however we got here, in my opinion, really does not make a difference. The board still needs to have that third-party. If it's going to be SFC, then it's, let's, somebody contact FSC tomorrow, get them the set of plans and have them review it and make sure it's compliant, it's ready to go. Because at the end of the day, they're the ones that are going to certify, give the affidavit that everything's done, everything was done by code. And once that's done, I said it years ago, we have a fire chief that I will delegate my authority to, and he will come down and put his John Hancock on the occupancy permit. Nothing against anybody. This is the longest project I have seen in my career. And personally, I think there's a lot of hands into the kitty. We need to cut down. We need to cut down the hands, get one person, and go. And that's it. Let that person do their job. Fees, I have no idea what one gets or the other gets. It's not my concern, that's your concern. My concern is what my letter said. Get somebody onboard, let's go.
Do we have numbers for both of them, officially, numbers?
I have something for Beverly. And by the way, Beverly is on Zoom, if you'd like to speak with her.
Good.
Do you want the numbers?
I do.
So she says that she charges $80 per hour for the inspection of the fire building. And, let's see, and to review, the sprinkler system plans would be about $1,000.
Can I ask a question? If the Murphy group is already somewhat familiar with the project, is it possible it would take them less time?
Did you guys hear that question? Do you think there's any time investment value to somebody who's already familiar with the project? Or are they, are they really just starting from zero anyway, in order to get a full inspection done?
Yeah, I think that's a logical answer, and a logical question. If you're already involved in the project, no matter what it is, you're up to speed more than somebody coming in off the street. To what degree, I don't know. But SFC, and Jeff's gone through that building with a fine-tooth comb, so I think he knows the building pretty well.
But it sounds like we don't have official numbers from him.
I don't, best of my knowledge, and I, you know, I don't think anybody's reached back out to SFC. I think they're on the bench, not knowing what to do.
Maybe we should have someone reach out to SFC. We've got Beverly. Find out who can do it, and how much each one of them costs, estimate, and then decide.
Which is a logical question. I will advise the board, it's time-sensitive. We've been, this has been, like the chief said, this has been dragged out beyond comprehension. I think the plans have been sitting at the state Fire Marshal's office now for two months.
But, I mean, I think we are all in agreement of the direction we want to go. We need a third-party to do it.
Yeah, I just think anybody in the room, Shanti, the chief, myself, and I'm just a contractor. I don't care who does the inspections. I don't care who does the reviews. I think we're all on the same page. We're all in the same direction. You've got to get that first.
I just think we're talking about, we need two quotes. We need, we already have one. We need the other quote.
Shanti has his hand up.
So I just want to make sure that, and I work with Beverly a lot, but I want to make sure that her price is considering inspections, $1,000. Is that only the review, or is that going to include? I'm doubtful that that may or may not include onsite inspections to completion. So just want to make sure that we clarify that as well. And also, as I said, I have worked with Beverly quite a bit in Stratum. She's extremely competent, has worked, you know, I believe, with the Fire Marshal's office, in their office for many years. But that said, there may be something said for someone that has actually been through the actual building itself, you know, hours and hours of time invested, you know, they would be up to speed quicker. But, but to my initial point of my question is, just make sure that inspections are included. I want to get locked in with $1,000, then all of a sudden, you're getting a bill from Beverly for $1,500 to $2,000, and then you're surprised. So make sure that's inclusive with inspections.
To follow up on what Shanti said, there's a level of, if the chief and the building inspector, more importantly, the building inspector, he just said he's worked with this woman, there's a comfort level that has a dollar value assessed on.
Yep.
It might not be tangible, but there's a dollar of value assessed on.
I mean.
And we don't need the project manager going down that same rabbit hole that was before. This person might do a better job.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure it was the, again, the chief was saying it earlier. Let's not talk about history. But I just, my thing is, and I don't see why the board couldn't get back together on an off night, just to look at two quotes, you know? So we're voting on two quotes.
Maybe when we do the quotes, we can find out their timeframe on when they can start.
In that too, right? Yeah, yeah.
Wait, wait, isn't Beverly here now? Can Beverly tell us if her price is inclusive of inspection? Isn't she, she said she's on the call? I don't see her, but if she is, let her tell us. People, anyone? Beverly? Diane, didn't you say Beverly was on the call?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't hear you, Kate, so I'm not sure what you're saying.
I can't hear her either. I can't either.
That's, can you hear me now?
Beverly's on the phone.
Yes.
I would think, with all due respect, I would think that'd be a little unfair to that fire protection engineer. I think personally, I think the board should contact both engineers, based on my letter, tell them, so the, both of them, this is what we want. Review of the plans. Review of the Marshals' office. Inspections, affidavit. That way, both parties go for the same. To have somebody in a public meeting hypothetically say, well, my $1,000 is to do everything, well, I'm going to go bid on the job, I'm going to come in at $900. I've never done, I think that's unfair.
Yeah, I tend to agree with you. I didn't know she'd be on, but, you know.
Oh, I thought we had a bid from her already. Okay. Just curious what it was.
So Beverly is on the line. I believe she had quoted an hourly rate, and perhaps she went a bit further and estimated that to review the plans would be $1,000. But she is here. She could at least respond and let us know if that was inclusive or not.
Beverly, I was asked specifically for the costs to review the plans, so, and what the hourly rate was. So that's the cost that I provided.
So would that be, we'll let Diane reach out to both of them tomorrow, and give them the details of what we want, and their start date and their hourly rate, and then we'll meet back and make a decision.
I think what I would prefer, I can reach out to them both again, but I want to know exactly what you guys want. And I don't care who it comes from, but until I have, we can compare apples to apples, that would be fine.
I sent it two weeks ago to the board selection. It's in writing already, what that engineer should do. And that was after talking with the building inspector.
We need to get to the board.
Diane, do you have that letter, right? The copy of the letter?
I don't know.
I actually sent it to every single board member. The Board of Selectmen.
I believe it was March.
Building Department.
It was March 3rd, he sent the letter.
It was the day after.
Yes.
Meeting here.
I remember it well.
Exactly, exactly, because you called me on it.
Can you just resend it tomorrow to Diane, and?
I'll resend it, that's right.
Okay.
So who's going to make up this, I mean, you're going to just give me this piece of paper that says this is what you want, right?
Yep.
Okay, it's not going to go out tomorrow, just so you know, because I have to do the minutes, and those have come priority. So, I mean, I will do my best.
Unless you specifically tell her what you want her to ask, we can get that out tomorrow. But if she has to wait to review the minutes, she's got to review the minutes to get the wording.
I can't tell her what to ask, because I'm not a fire engineer.
I'm going to offer myself up to work with Diane and the chief with the letter as our chief. We'll start with the letter, but we might have to call you, okay? Okay. All right. Yeah. I still have my copy of the letter, Diane, so I'll call you tomorrow.
All right.
Great.
Okay.
And I'm, I think if we can, we meet this week on that, as soon as we can.
Yeah, if possible.
Right with me.
How long do you want to wait before, if you don't get an answer from these two companies, how long, I need a deadline, so we need a response by?
Sounds good to me.
Well, Beverly's on the phone. She's still on the phone, so you can, she's going to know you're calling her tomorrow.
I think we already have her. So we basically have one vendor, ask them to respond by Friday, I guess is.
So you're talking March?
Hopefully sooner.
19?
March 19th, yeah.
So you want a response by March 19?
Hopefully sooner.
I will, this is what I'm getting at.
As soon as possible. No later than.
Kate was talking, so I didn't want to interrupt. Okay, because she's done. So I have reached out to SFC, and it took a while to get a response. So I doubt that I can get you a response from them by Friday. And I was just asking him if he does fire inspections, and if he's certified. What I, what he told me is that there is no such thing as a fire inspector certification. This is what I was told. This, let me finish. So he says he can, let me finish. He says he can offer those services. They do inspections, and, you know, they'll sign off whatever, but, so I don't know anymore if there's such a title or not.
Diane's 100% correct. Okay? I don't want to insult no one. They are called fire protection engineers. They spent a lot of funds for their education, spent a lot of time in school. FSC, I will be with tomorrow morning, 10 o'clock, doing a walkthrough inspection for a set of plans they designed for the old middle school.
Great.
And when it's done, they're going to sign an affidavit saying that it was done. So I know they do it. I've been doing this since 95. Okay? I know engineers do it. If you call them a fire inspector, yeah, they're right, they're not going to, they're not fire inspectors. Under their capacity as a fire protection engineer, they do do the walkthrough, because they're signing the affidavit saying that the drawings were done, it was tested per code, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If the board wants, and I know time is tight, Diane, Diane, shoot for Monday? Have a meeting for Tuesday? Decide on Tuesday who your third-party inspector is, and let's roll with this.
That's kind of what I was thinking, is giving them the weekend to look it over.
Sounds good to me.
Fine.
Yep.
Okay.
So E., Fire Department requisitions. Somebody want to read requisition 2497, SCBAs, chief?
So these are Fire Department requisitions.
I think I'm doing it right.
Do our two, do our two, do our two members of the Fire Department still want to stay up here for Fire Department requisitions?
Well, these are voted by the people. I don't care. I recuse myself.
I don't want clarification. This is the second time. I'm going to interrupt them, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, when, recusing yourself when you're on the board, the reason you recuse yourself is if you are getting some gain out of it. For instance, if Bob Donovan was plowing for Mike, and we were talking about the plow rate, he would recuse himself. When we were talking about the plow rate with Lisa, her husband worked for Mike, she recused. We were talking about transfer station, my grandson worked there, I recused. The fact, unless you're saying they shouldn't vote because they have something to gain from surviving if we don't improve the exhaust or the sprinkler system, they certainly can vote. They have input. They have no financial gain, they have no personal interest. Other than that, I'm sure you're going to speak with what's in the best interest of the town. I just needed to say that.
No, you're absolutely right.
Well, and I would say it's for their boss in their office building. I mean, it's up to them, it's their vote, but.
But these are warrant articles anyway. We can't deny it.
I don't know if they're warrant articles.
People voted on them.
Not for these requisitions. These are requisitions, and what people voted for was in favor of moving the money that we can access. They didn't vote for these requisitions.
The first one is the SCBAs, which was one of the articles.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. They voted for that one.
And I'll be honest with you, on this side of the fence, the decision to stay or not stay is on that side of the fence.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm only here to do a job. That's it. I'm not sure which requisition you want to do.
SCBA is the first one.
Okay, the first one was a warrant article. I don't remember what the number of that warrant article was.
Number nine.
But we're looking, since it was approved by the voters, to have the board approve, sign the lease agreement, so we can place the order, because they take several months to get here. And since the last time we've had this conversation about SCBA, he's, the sales rep has come down and picked up, I believe, two or three more SCAPs that have gone out of service. So.
Yeah, I was looking at the first one, sorry. Which is the vehicle exhaust system. And electrician as well.
Charlie, can you make a recommendation for 2497?
Some more.
All in favor for 249? Kate, did you see it?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll recuse myself. I don't care.
I don't think, if this was on the warrant, it shouldn't be recused.
I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll recuse myself, since I'm going to be using the SCBAs, so.
But I'll.
Seat over here, just so, if that's what Matt wants.
Well, I don't think it's just me. I think it's a lot of people in town.
Well, the voters voted for it, but I'll be using the SCBA, so I don't want my own personal safety gain.
Hi, Roko?
Right, but I, what I'm saying, let's be clear, what I'm saying is, you work in the Fire Department. This is your office building, this is your boss, so.
I understand that, too.
I'll find the definition on the law on it tomorrow.
Yeah, at this point, I'm going to, I'm going to recuse, just so we can keep on moving.
With all due respect, the voters also knew he worked for the Fire Department.
Yeah, they did.
Okay? This is putting the Fire Department in a major, between a rock and a hard place. Okay? The board needs to figure it out, please. Okay?
Yes, they do.
That's all I'm going to say.
I take the roll call vote?
Yeah, go for it.
Use three.
Could I have a motion?
I recused. I can't do the motion.
Yeah, so it's the vice chair.
Motion is to approve requisition 2497. Do I have a second?
How much?
2497.
Oh, how much, what's the amount?
Dollar amount.
It comes out to $243,700.
$93.25.
Right.
You're going to have to amend your motion, because if you don't mind, to add the co-chair to sign, because normally the chairman signs. So if Chairman Foote's going to recuse himself, he can't sign.
Right.
I just have to say, Larry, your boss is not the fire chief. Is that correct?
My what?
Is your boss the fire chief?
Kate, speak up, please.
He's asking, is his, is his boss the fire chief, is what she?
When the bell rings. When the bell doesn't ring, right now, he is my boss, because he is the director of the EOC, and the governor passed the thing.
You know?
Larry has never recused himself from these kind of votes before.
But I voted the last year 20 requisitions for the Fire Department, and nobody said a damn thing. Now all of a sudden, it's an issue.
It's because of me, so it's okay.
It's because now we have two members.
Just vote on it.
Call the vote.
You can't shoot it down, anyway.
Okay, timeout. Timeout.
We're calling a vote.
You guys, first off, the chairman has to sign the lease agreement, okay? Because it's specific. Then we need a second person to sign, and then I actually have to sign as taking the minutes. So let's make this a really clean motion, please. All right? So you can still be recused, but you're still going to have to sign.
Absolutely. I have no problem with that.
All right. So how about if we do this? Charlie's going to make this motion.
Yep.
Right, to sign, to authorize the chairman and the vice chair and the secretary to sign the lease agreement where needed for this scumbers or whatever you want to call them.
Requisition 2497.
For what?
For requisition 2497, correct?
Okay.
Yep.
Everybody okay, cool with that?
Sounds like a good motion. I'll second.
You second, okay, great. That was tough.
It's going to be long.
You have to call.
Okay.
You have to call, all in favor.
So Charlie, you need to call the vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And it was unanimous?
Well, it's three and two abstain.
Three, zero, two.
Three and two abstain.
Well, no, we recused. There's a difference, but.
Hey, mine will do this one, too. And you can do that one, too.
Do you need an amount on that or not?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve requisition 2569, and it's...
2596? 2496?
No, 2596.
Okay, so you're skipping over...
No, 2569. 2569.
I have 2496.
2496.
You're not supposed to have that one.
No? Vehicle exhaust?
Disregard that one.
Disregard that one.
My partner brought it, which that was supposed to stop.
So which one?
Oh, no, wait a second. This one. I looked at the wrong one. This one, this one's a yes. This one's a no. I'll hold on this one until the board figures out how it's gonna go.
So what is the requisition that Charlie has in his hand?
That is for the steel struts.
Is that the vehicle stable?
And the ACC package.
He gave...
Which one?
I wanna hold off on this one.
I don't know what this one...
The board. Requisition 2569. I'll hold off on that one also till the board figures out.
Okay, we're gonna...
How we're gonna go further.
Okay, we'll cancel that one, and I make a motion to approve the requisition number 2496, and this is for the air cleaning specialist.
Yeah, the vehicle exhaust system.
Yep. And that is $48,500, and then Jason M...
For that, that's the electrician?
For that. The electrician for $1,610, for a total of $50,110.
Okay.
So I'll, second for discussion.
Only question I have, that was from Article 3. So if you haven't moved Article 3 around from the sale of the old fire station, that was part of the warrant article, just wanna make sure you can do it.
Right, and I, I think what we had talked about, and we'll obviously vote on this, is
Warren Article 4, it says here.
We wanted to have the...
Is it 4? Okay, it's 4.
We wanted to have the inspection done first, because right now, the last inspection, which is a couple of years old, tells us that we meet code in terms of the vehicle exhaust. If we're, if we're... No, let me finish, 'cause I know this was all the rage a couple of weeks ago. I, I for one, and I said this a couple of weeks ago, I wanna have all the information. So if we have an NFPA certified inspector go in and they tell us that this is indeed, it doesn't meet code, and you have to replace it, that is different than where we are now, where we haven't had that sort of information to vote upon. Now, let's say it does meet code. We might decide we wanna do, you know, the focus should be health and safety, so we're investing it for that reason. The voters just have to know why we're spending the $50,000, and I think we just need to wait for this information before we vote on this.
Okay, to clear that up, Mr. Burrell. One, a board member made it public that the current exhaust system NFPA, I sent the board a four-page letter, as the fire chief, asking the board of selectmen for that documentation. As of today, I haven't received that documentation. So that tells me that that was never done. Also, it was made public by the board of selectmen, NFPA 1500, 9.1.5 asterix. That is the system. Sitting right there, that's the system. By code, NFPA 1500, 9.1.5...
Yep.
Asterix. Says a captured system, 100% captured system. That is a 100% captured system. I'm standing here today, and we had this conversation a few weeks ago with the resident Higgins, brought it up, because the board had a member say, and we are, and I could tell ya, the bill, the construction manager never had that fan approved. I never had it approved. Dennis never had it. Ron never had it. And in talking to Shanti, he's got no documentation saying that that fan meets NFPA 1500, 9.1.5. So if the board of selectmen has that documentation, I think the board of selectmen should have presented it three weeks ago when I sent you my letter. That's the reason for that. Code clearly states, the fire department shall protect the firefighters, living quarters, and sleeping area. Shall. I didn't quote it. The board quoted it.
And the board didn't. A member of the board did, right?
You know my feeling, Matt?
I know, I know.
It's the board.
And you know my feeling, so...
It's the board.
I'm, all I'm saying is, let's get more information before we make the investment. I'm not, for my vote, I'm not saying no. I'm not saying yes yet. Let's have all the information before we do so.
Okay, so when is the board gonna hire somebody?
We just talked about it. We just talked about the fact that we're gonna...
That fan that was quoted, if you read my letter, that's a mechanical engineer.
Yep.
Now you guys are gonna hire a mechanical engineer.
No, we're talking about hiring an NFPA certified person to inspect the building, right?
The fan that was quoted, fan that was quoted.
Yep.
The fan that's in the station under the building code. The building code, and Shanti, Ken, I'm sure will say something. Under the building code, that is not a fire protection engineer. That is a mechanical engineer. I can stand here today and tell ya, that fan does not meet NFPA 1500, 9.1.5 asterix, 100% captured system. For that fan, and Shanti can correct me on it, because I think Dennis said it public, I think Ron said it public, for it to meet the building code, all the garage doors have to be opened, the apparatus, no vehicles can be at idle in the station. You have to open all the apparatus doors, start the vehicle, drive it outside, pick up your passengers. I could be wrong. Shanti's on, he can... So I, I can stand here and tell ya, you're gonna spend money to get a mechanical engineer to say that fan does not meet NFPA. It's not an NFPA-approved fan. It was installed per the building code. So where, somebody needs to present, produce the documentation. You wanna table it? It's gonna get tabled anyways, because it would be a two-vote. Nope. It's gonna get tabled anyways. In the meantime, hire a mechanical engineer to see if that fan meets NFPA 1500. And that's not on me. That was on the selectmen. That said it. That was twice. I don't have a problem. You guys wanna table it? That's why I'm tabling other things, because the vehicle extrication struts, both of them could possibly use to save somebody's life. I'll table it until the board... They have no gain of it, other than saving a life. Bronze memorial markers. I was gonna put that on a warrant article. And to save the warrant articles, we held off to put it to the board. God forbid, they might need a bronze memorial marker someday. So we'll hold off. Just hold off on that exhaust system until you get your mechanical engineer.
But everything you just...
And let them shoot it down.
Chief, everything you just described...
Yep.
Okay?
I'm finished.
We need more information, okay?
On what?
That's, everything you just described. You talked about, you know, whether, you know, what the legal opinion is of these guys recusing themselves. We're talking about a mechanical engineer. I don't think we have the expertise in this room right now.
You hired me to tell you. I am standing here today telling you, you need to meet NFPA 1500, 9.1.5 asterix.
Right.
You wanna hold off on it? That's on you. I said the exact same thing in my letter about a month ago.
You did.
Telling you guys the exact same thing.
I just want more information. That's all I want before I go.
Right, and I asked, as the fire chief...
Yep.
I asked the board to give me the information. And if you couldn't give me the information, to hire the right people.
And that's what I'm saying.
So start hiring the right people.
That's what I'm looking to do.
Enjoy wasting taxpayers' money.
Yeah.
Move the question? I move the motion, I mean?
But is Shanti...
All those in favor?
Did we have a motion?
Yeah, I did.
I'm wondering if Shanti was...
And Matt seconded.
Kate wants to talk.
Sorry, just really quickly with Shanti. All I wanna know, I'm hearing it's not NFPA compliant currently, right? And is the more information you wanna know just to confirm that? And, but we know it isn't.
So, once again, I would say, and I'm not one to shirk any responsibility, but we're this is such a hot topic. I would, and just so that the board is aware, most of your fire protection engineers, you know, SFC, Beverly Koalit, Beverly's a mechanical engineer. She does mechanical, she does plumbing, she does fire protection. I mean, she's a, she, she does it all. So, you know, easy enough for her to come in and grab the section of the code that either supports or denies the existing, you know, ventilation system with regards to NFPA 1500 and also the International Building Code. And I'll just say also that the International Building Code, which is the state code, will also covers fire protection, because it references the, the NFPA, many chapters of the NFPA. And what it's saying is, that fan by itself as a standalone is not a vehicle exhaust system. It's very clear. It's very clear. It's not a vehicle exhaust system. The only true vehicle exhaust system is a source captured system. It's a system that attaches directly to the exhaust, or if they're a vertical stack-type exhaust, it's a tray in the ceiling that captures it as well. So that system that's in there right now is not intended to be used to exhaust vehicle emissions. It, it is designed specifically for all the doors to be open, wide open. The vehicle needs to start up and not idle, idle, and then drive out. That's the only compliant situation that we would have. Now, whether or not that meets NFPA 1500, unfortunately, the research that I've done, I'm not able to, to make that determination. So I would really need to leave that to the fire protection engineer. But currently, it doesn't make sense, I will add. I don't like to throw out my opinion either, but I will, and say that we're in the Northeast. We spend a lot of money on heating bills. It's a big station with tall ceilings. So every time you open those doors wide, wide open, you're letting all your heat go out, and you're really not providing the best protection for your firefighters, because there still is going to be exhaust that's left in the building. And that's when that little exhaust system perhaps would kick on and hopefully, you know, get rid of it. But really, you don't also wanna start your vehicles up and run them right out. These vehicles should be able to start up and idle for a little while. You have routine maintenance that has to happen December, January, February, 10, 10 below zero, zero, 10 degrees, whatever the case may be. And you really can't effectively clean and work on your vehicles outdoors. So that's what the capture, the source capture system is designed to do. Allow the doors to be closed, start up your rigs. 100% of those emissions are gone. Now, whether or not currently, the question may be, you know, in, in a different town perhaps, we don't have the money for source capture. Therefore, we are requiring all firefighters to open the doors wide up, turn that ignition on, and get out of there. My understanding is that would be compliant, but I won't stand by that, not until a fire protection air confirms it.
So why, what information, Matt, do you need? I'm just curious, what do you think we need?
I want the, I want the information from the fire protection engineer. I, I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of people that are really sure that's a good thing, but I'm hearing some other people that there are enough question marks. It's $50,000, okay?
It was $27,000.
What's that?
Let's make it clear.
Yeah.
The system we were gonna put in...
Yep.
Was $27,000.
Yep.
Until the board of selectmen said that we were gonna install a captured system.
Yeah, understood.
Okay?
I know, I know where you're going with that. I'm, all I'm trying to do is make the point that it's a lot of money.
Exactly, and I'm all done hiding in the back and being afraid.
Yeah.
Okay? And I said that the last time. I'm all done being afraid like all the other department heads. It's simple. All you have to do, Google NFPA 1500, 9.1.5, and yourself, you will learn, you will read that an exhaust fan isn't. If the board of selectmen wants to say today, I'll put out an order tonight telling everybody, open all the garage doors.
I'm not talking about that. I'm not talking about...
But your building inspector just said...
Chief, you're asking me to, you're asking me to Google something.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Can we vote on the motion? Charlie, put a motion out.
What's your motion is by now?
Just table it. Table it.
No, you put a motion to get a vote on it.
Yep.
Clarification, this, the requisition that you have because of the purchase policy? Did you ma, is this the only place that can support?
It says, I've been doing this a long time, Diane. No disrespect. I either get you three quotes, state bid, or sole source lets.
Okay, so you have all three?
I, I dealt with the micromanagement for years. I'm not gonna stand up here and not be prepared. I've had, tonight really hit the right, wrong nerve. I'll be honest with you. Really hit a wrong nerve. Okay? I'm not the one that started this with this exhaust system. Apparently, the board of selectmen, the department head sent you guys a letter, with the exception of Edwin, about a month ago. And I'm standing here today, learning that you guys did nothing on that letter. Why am I, why am I or any other department head wasting their time sending letters to the board of selectmen? This is a life safety issue. You guys must've missed the whole section about cancer in my letter. Must've missed that whole thing, and that was before Mr. Higgins got up here.
Can we vote on a motion? Not to interrupt, but Charlie has a motion for the requisition, nay, pass it or fail it, to three of yous.
Can you please repeat the motion?
The motion is to approve requisition 2496 for the NFAP 1500 filtration air system for the fire station.
So I'll, I'll second again for discussion. I wanna table till we have more information, but we can go to vote.
You can still vote on it. You gotta vote on it, though.
Yeah.
You can speak, speak as a resident, yes?
Yes, hi. Edwin Kralik, Gould Hill Road. This is important for firefighter health and safety.
Absolutely.
Cancer is actually a class I just took...
Absolutely.
Last month.
Absolutely.
I mean, unless you wanna table and talk about cancer for a couple hours, I, I don't see the issue. As a resident, as a firefighter, I don't see the issue here, so...
Well, his, his recommendation is to table it.
To get more information.
If you still gotta take a vote on it.
Wait, wait. I'm in favor of the motion.
I'm in favor of the motion.
Matt?
Oh, that was the vote? I'm a nay.
The motion passes two to one.
Yeah, so it passed anyway.
Is it okay if I put in there that this, if the funds are coming out of the...
Article 4.
Building fund?
I think it was Article 4, wasn't it?
I'm not sure.
Well, it's the building fund, the ones that I moved.
Okay, so you're okay if I put that in there? Chairman?
Yes.
Are you okay if I put that in?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that it for the fire, or you got one more?
This one here.
You got one more for the fire department. Edvin, one more. You got one more.
Ah.
I have two more for him, but I'm not sure what he's done at this point.
Please, that's part of it. You have extra copies. No, this is the great Marcus. They might eat it, God forbid someday.
That's my copy.
Take that, your answer.
That's my copy.
Oh, that's your copy, okay. No, I tabled this one.
You table it? You want me to table that one? And then I have 2569.
I tabled this one, too. I have your copy. I'll give it back. I have your copy, Mr. Morgan.
Okay, so we're gonna table
That's the execution struts.
2385 requisition, and
What about the vehicle stabilization system? Are you tabling?
I'm tabling.
He's tabling that.
I'm tabling that one because
Hey.
No, no, Matt, hey, chief, chief, you give me two of the same.
Did I? Well, that's because you got a lot of cost.
Here's one.
Because I have them here, too.
I just want, Mike.
What's this one?
That one's yours.
I've never
You took it away again.
In my entire career, I've never This is the first.
No, take yours.
This is the first for me.
Okay, moving on.
Get five and O every single time. I will hold off, even though it passed, until you guys do what you gotta do. With your mechanical engineer, your fire protection engineer.
Chief, you got what you needed to move forward.
You got what you needed to do it.
It's not right.
Yeah.
Bad taste in the mouth. No disrespect to you guys. Bad taste in the mouth. My phone's blowing, my phone's blowing up. It's not right. I'm sorry.
We'll get the answer for you. We'll have to call legal counsel.
Legal counsel's getting back to me this week.
Number F, Department of Labor inspection report. So are you typing on that? Bill Landry's not here?
No, you talked to him, and he said he didn't need to be here.
He didn't need to be here?
You talked to him, and he said he doesn't need to be here. This is basically us fixing the problems that were violations.
Okay.
We just need to get funding to be able to do some of these fixings.
But we don't have a list and a price, correct?
We don't have a price, but we got lists.
Most of it is minor. We're looking more at the electrical. That, we have to get an electrician to come in here, but it's not gonna be big dollars. It's to put in an outlet or a couple outlets because of the appliances at the transfer station.
Yeah.
And, you know, so they're minor things. We thought maybe you could come up with a not to exceed amount, and we'll do the best we can. These all have to be completed by April 25th, or we'll be
Is Bill taking the lead on this to follow up with the department heads?
Absolutely. He's already sent out the emails to everybody. We're working, and we've got the safety meeting, I think it's on April 3rd or something like that. April 7th, something like that.
G is NHMA webinar's available.
So can I get some idea?
Yeah, do we have a ballpark as to what?
Wow.
I don't know. We could start out with like $1,200 if we need
It's not, it's gonna be more than 12.
It is?
Oh, yeah, for electrician. If I may, if you want to, I'll put this up on the screen so you can see, but I did a short version for you, so give me a minute to share it.
If they're telling you to fix it, we don't have an option anyway, right?
We have to do it. We just don't have a price on the
So whether it's 1,200 or 2,200, we gotta get it done.
Yeah, and if it's less, we're gonna spend less.
Oh, absolutely.
We don't know at this point.
Okay, so at the town hall, we have one emergency light that needs fixing. That's usually, you know, around, by the time you get done, you probably
Well, that might be under your fire alarm contract guy.
No. These are the emergency lights.
You wanted to say exit?
No.
No. The emergency light, because you have to have lights if the power goes out. Even though we have a generator, we have to have the lights working.
So not those ones?
No.
No.
Just the spotlight ones. Battery backup ones.
That's like $20, bro. But anyway, good.
Okay, so this is what you have for the town hall only. So as you can see, the ladder is secured. Some of it's just heat notification stuff. Okay? You good with that one?
Move on.
Whoops. The transfer station is probably the one that's gonna be the biggest.
That will be more, yeah.
So they're gonna need some, quite a bit of electrical work. But some of this stuff should be able to be done by them, like making sure the ladder's secure.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
What about the eyewash station?
Yeah, we may have to buy one of those. I think if we had one, I don't think it's up to snuff, so Bill had said we'll probably end up getting one of those. They're about 80 bucks, they're not that much.
So then you've got the portable fuel containers. They're not secured. Lack of no smoking sign, you know? Some of this stuff is just
Tony could do.
Hmm, okay. Hons not working, you know, the, there's some mechanical issues on the two, the two tractors. The Hons aren't working. So maybe we can get one of those little ones that you put on a bike, you know, that you squeeze.
I think it's the backup, when you're backing up, it's not beeping, you know, when a truck backs up.
Yeah.
So that's something on the tractor.
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
So the first aid kit actually has food in it, no first aid. So we just have to rename it, train them on construction equipment, which I think that's probably more in the salt shack area?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be, there's a fire extinguisher that's needed in the tire and storage bin area
Right.
building, and an eyewash station.
Okay. Yeah, I did go over the list, so.
So is the ballpark like total?
Well, why don't you do 2,000? Do you think that'd be enough?
No, I would just say, just let us get it fixed.
Are you talking about for the whole, all the departments?
The what?
You're talking 2,000 for all the work, or just
Well, the minor stuff, I don't know what electrician's gonna cost. Diane thinks that's gonna be more. We're gonna need more at the transfer station because they're
You know what? Why don't you just go up to 2,000 and then give us a warning that we're going over that part, and we'll see where we are.
Okay.
But how are you gonna prioritize who does their work first?
Yeah, because most of the work can be done in the electrical
Trish has a question. Oh, Trish, go.
So this is kind of a question on the transfer station, eyewash station. In order to meet code, and maybe it's something different because we don't have running water there.
Right.
But you have to have a log. You've gotta run water for 15 minutes straight every month and have a log showing that you did it, or it's not an approved eyewash station.
Department of Labor gave us a sample of one. It's all the
So she got a different one? Because she gave us one at the fire station, too, and we have to do that.
Say what?
She gave us one for the fire station eyewash, too, and it has to be run once a month for 15 minutes straight of water and a log showing it was done and who did it. So I just, I'm saying that because I don't know if we have the capabilities to do that.
She knows there's no water at the transfer station, so there's one with a solution or whatever.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure we don't screw ourselves up.
Yeah, we'll talk about that probably more at the safety meeting.
Okay.
Are we good, Diane?
We need a motion, right?
Yeah.
For what's our not to exceed?
Not to exceed the 2,000, but
Can we just go so we can get it done? So let's try for 5,000. If it's under 5, we just keep it there, but if it's
Well, that's my theory, because we have to get the work done.
It's gotta get done, one way or the other, right?
Just as long as we're safe with that number, because we, like you said, we have to get it done. So I will move to approve funding not to exceed $5,000 in order to comply with the Department of Labor inspection report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So moving on to the webinars. Dusty flyers you gave in our packet, right? The virtual workshops. Edvin, these are good for you.
Yeah, I already registered for the April 6th one.
Excellent.
And really, it's one of those things where if any of us haven't done it in a while, it's always valuable.
Right, it's a good refresher for us, too.
And not just beyond this board, right? You know, the other boards.
All the boards.
I don't know if we get a bulk discount or anything, but
The April 6th one's free, so.
That's good.
Yeah, I think we need to know what trainings you're signing up for, because it's, we have a limited amount in our budgets.
Yeah, this one's free.
Oh, that's great, good.
Yeah, it's the local officials workshop, free virtual training event.
Okay. There are some that are 60
Yeah, the right to know one is 40.
Yeah. Okay.
So letter H, letters to the banks identifying new treasurer, interim deputy treasurer, and trustees of trust fund. Is that a motion?
No, there's several letters that the board needs to sign. These are taking people off the accounts, off the bank accounts, and adding people on.
One each one ready?
There's one for the trustees of trust funds to open that new account for the skateboard park. Board always has to approve putting names on, taking names off, and, you know, putting money into accounts.
Okay, so Edvin, can you read the skateboard park one?
Sure. Just one second.
Do you have it?
I do not, actually. Give him that one. There you go. That's, I think that's all. So am I making a motion to approve this? And read it?
You can just say, "Motion to approve the letter as written."
All right, and then read the letter, correct?
Yep.
All right. Motion to approve the letter as written. To whom it may concern, the Board of Selectmen is authorizing the trustees of trust funds to open a new account under the name of Town of Newton, trustees of trust funds, skateboard park expendable trust fund, using the TIN 02-6.
You don't need to give up.
All right, good. Those signing the signature card will be Joseph A. Simone, trustee Mary M. Allen, trustee and Ashley McKee, trustee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Matt, can you get one?
Yep.
I think just one, except all the letters at once. Hang on one second.
You've got so many of them.
What do you think?
They're basically all the same type of letters to the bank. You don't need to do each one individually.
As long as the subject
The student name change, then, okay.
Yeah, you can just mention who they are.
I'm gonna move for the board to sign the letter to Citizens Bank identifying our new treasurer and requesting that he has all the necessary access.
Correct, that's good.
Second.
I think Kate's second.
Kate's second, that's All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The board all has to sign them, so that's why you're gonna make an emotion.
So this should be, you got TD Bank? Did someone do TD Bank?
This one's yours.
Oh, the TD Bank one, I'll read that. Our new treasurer is Kieran P. Kelly.
Matt, are you doing the colored ones?
I'm doing blue, is
No, I mean the letters, are they the colored seals?
No, they're not.
They, you need, they're
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, we need the colored seals.
We can do it at the end.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
And per the approval of Mr. Kelly, the Board of Selectmen has appointed Diane M. Warren as his interim deputy treasurer, effective March 16, 2021 through June 15, 2021.
So let me just explain. He came in, met with us. We haven't got a schedule set up right now, and he has no idea for a deputy. We need to sign checks, and we need to make deposits, because we can't just let things hang until he can find a way to come in here. So I'm asking the board to approve Diane. She's agreed, and I mentioned it to Mr. Kelly. He was fine with it to have Diane stay on so she can at least sign checks and make deposits as needed. And then I'm trying to get them to come in with a schedule. I haven't got that yet.
All right, so I need a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I've already signed it.
All right, so Matt, you did yours.
Yep. We have to make sure we're signing the sealed letters.
Charlie, there is a couple that you'll need to re-sign because your name is spelt wrong.
Oh, okay.
So, and they're the
That's the same one.
Yeah, the originals.
One's TD Bank, one's Citizens, one's North Shore Bank, I think.
I think we fixed the North Shore. He already signed that one.
So this is the letter that we voted on. We sent this out to MIRMAC?
They sent it to us, for your instructions, that you wanted them to write it for you.
That's what we did.
So the
This is your letter of support?
So if we're okay as written, then we can vote.
Everybody read the letter from MIRMAC?
MIRMAC, yep.
So we need a motion to sign.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who made the motion?
I guess Larry.
Edvin.
So Larry would, Edvin kinda, I think what you were looking for was so moved.
I said I need a motion to sign.
So if you say so moved here, then I'll second the so moved.
When you make your motion, you need to actually say the motion. Diane can't guess what you're trying to make a motion on. So if it's a letter to the MIRMAC, please say that, so it's in the minutes.
So you got that, Edvin?
Motion to, motion to sign the letter
I thought he seconded.
He did the motion. I asked for somebody to do the motion. I didn't do the motion.
He was intending to make the motion.
Got it, got it.
Okay, so Edvin, you moved to sign the letter of support to the town of MIRMAC?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Now we need a second.
Who's
Second.
Matt, okay.
Any discussion?
Larry, it would really help, because it's hard to hear, if you tell me who made the motion and who seconded.
Yeah.
Edvin made the motion, Charlie seconded. All in favor?
I thought Matt seconded.
Aye.
I did at one point, but now we're, we're good, we're good.
All right, so Charlie seconded that one, okay.
Matt, what was your point? I'd like to know.
What point?
You said you had a point or something like that? Concern?
Oh, the, we have to make sure we're signing the sealed
So
letters, not the, some of these going around are just copies.
Yeah, they're copies.
So we have to make sure the, they're colored, right?
The originals have stickies that say sign here.
Everything's in here, right?
Yeah.
That's right.
There we go.
You guys, do you have your copies? And that's what happens when you do this. You keep switching papers around, you're signing the wrong things.
Yeah.
You have to sign, it has a sticker on it that says sign? Those are the ones you sign?
That's why I came in early and signed everything.
Right.
Okay, so J is recreation essay contest. You guys read those?
So if I could just do this one really quick, so we don't kinda wanna divulge who won in public to build the suspense. So if everybody's okay just as presented, there's a recommendation from the Recreation Department as to who is going to be the winners. If the board's okay with that...
I'm good.
You know, we just vote on it that way. So I would, I would move to pick the winners of the Recreation Commission essay contest as recommended by the Recreation Commission.
I'll second.
Charlie second. Matt's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just, I really enjoyed reading them.
Excellent.
Same.
Good job, kids.
So next is the 2021 Gale Library release of operating funds. Nancy, what is this, this amount?
That's the balance. We keep what needs to be done for payroll, and then the rest of it goes to them for their operating of the library. Does it say on there?
It says, it should say operating budget.
Yeah, it says operating expense, $30,525.
Yeah, so that's the remainder. Kim keeps all the payroll stuff, what she estimates that's going to be, I believe, and this is the balance so they can operate the library.
This is last year or this year?
No, this is for this year.
Okay.
2021, their operating budget.
Yep.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve the Gale Library's operating expense account in the amount of $30,525 and 0 cents.
I'll second.
Who's that, you?
I have a question.
So Charlie made the motion with Gale Library. Edwin second.
Kate with a question.
I just want to reiterate that I know there was some confusion, that this is normally done. This is not because we've been made agents of the library trust fund. This is separate from that, correct?
Right, it's separate. It's separate, Katie.
But I just want everyone to know because it's a little confusing.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.